Also, eloquently reminded us that united we stand, as I did before. I'm going to call now this Marlin Bidor to introduce to us the next speaker, who will be the honourable Alvin Nimrod, who is Minister of Legal Affairs and Labour. We will now wait for the introduction of the next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure that I introduce this next speaker. Alvin Nimrod was born and raised in the island of Caracu. He received his primary education at the Hillsborough Government School in Caracu, and later attended the Grenada Boys Secondary School. After completing his education at the Grenada Boys Secondary School, he returned to the tendency where he embarked upon teaching at Currie at the Mount Pleasant Government School in Caracu. In pursuit of higher learning, Alvin migrated to the United States of America, where he achieved his academic and professional goals. He attended Brooklyn College in New York and received a Bachelor's of Science degree in Political Science. He later attended the John Jay College of Criminal Justice, where he obtained a Master's of Arts degree in Criminal Justice. He culminated his academic pursuits by attending New York Law School, where he obtained his Jurisprudence Doctorate in Law. Following his graduation from law school, he was admitted to practice through the membership in New York Bar Association. Mr. Nimrod entered into private practice and became a senior partner in the love form of Nimrod and Tucker. Through his practice in the city of New York, he specialized in immigration and real estate law. As a dedicated and committed Grenadian, who upholds the principle of civic participation, he served as honorary legal counsel to the permanent mission of Grenada and the United Nations on a pro bono basis. In his continued effort to pursue the path of civic engagement, in 1991, he gave up law practice in New York and returned to Grenada. Shortly after, he attended the Hugh Wooding Law School in Trinidad, where he received a legal education certificate and was later admitted to practice law in the Supreme Court of Grenada. In 1995, Nimrod entered the political arena and selected the constituency of Caracu-Pitymartnik to launch his political career. Two years later, he was appointed to Grenada's senate. In January 1999, he was elected on a new national party, the NNP, which is the best one, of course. And became parliamentary representative of the constituency of Caracu-Pitymartnik. He joined the Mitchell Cabinet and was assigned portfolio of Minister of Legal Affairs, Labour, Local Government of Caracu-Pitymartnik affairs. He was later assigned additional portfolios, which included Minister of Foreign Affairs, International Trade, Attorney General. He also served as leader of government business in the lower house. He has held several senior party positions, including a stint as chairperson, and currently holds the position of deputy leader of the new national party. Honourable Alvin Nimrod was appointed Grenada Deputy Prime Minister following the February 213 elections. He is also Minister of Legal Affairs, Labour, Local Government, Caracu and Pitymartnik affairs. And now, I am extremely proud and honoured to introduce to you my cousin, my friend, my ally, Honourable Alvin Nimrod.
Thank you, thank you very much, my dear friend and cousin Marlin, Dr. Alexander of the Keith Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada, Caracu and Pitymartnik, Honourable Clarence Motters Cowan, Minister of Health, and of course, we do have Ambassador to the United Nations, Ambassador Dennis Antoine, Ambassador Derek James, my good friend Peter Charles David, other distinguished members on the head table, and of course, you people present here this evening. Let me say a pleasant good evening to each and every one of you. And let me say how pleased and excited I am to be back in your presence once more. Any of you will know that my political ambitions and aspirations was born right here in New York, was nurtured in New York, and of course, barefooted in New York. I want to say thanks to all of you who have contributed towards my success in politics and otherwise. I know that you will understand when I say a special thanks to the Alvin Nimrod Support Group that had begun my political career, and also to the umbrella NNP New York Support Group, and most of all, to all the people, in particular, the people of Caracu and Pitymartnik, who have elected me for four consecutive terms to represent them in the House of Parliament. My dear friends, there are some of the tractors are wondering whether or not they'll want again. And I said to them, the God first asked that question to God, then the people of Caracu and Pitymartnik, then the Prime Minister, and leave me out of it. My dear friends, on February 19th, 2013, the people of Grenada, Caracu and Pitymartnik spoke in clear and unequivocal, unambiguous terms by electing the new national party overwhelmingly to represent their interests. They were clear on their wishes and their desires, and they gave us 15 seats as the tools to implement their wishes. My friends, the people were clear. They wanted unity. They wanted democracy. They wanted economic development, and they wanted good leadership among other things. And so, of course, the NNP has taken the instructions from the people and attempted to satisfy their desire and their needs. And so, the unity, of course, my friends, was clearly demonstrated by the act of the Prime Minister and other members of the new national party in welcoming my good friend Peter David into the House, unconditionally, my friends. And of course, the parliamentary democracy of which the people are very, very concerned. Because if you remember, for six months, the Parliament was closed, and they did not have the means to address their own grievances. And this is why they believed that the new national party would have restored democracy to our country. And today, this government is making sure that the Parliament is open on a regular basis. And you know what? Even the NSC had not one single seat. We have three NSCs sitting in the Senate. If that is not democracy, my friends, I don't know what else is democracy. For economic development, we have inherited a very, very serious economic problem. In addition to the war crisis, my friends, we met something we call homegrown crisis. Because we did not complain as previous governments. We did not cry. We did not say that the treasury was empty, even if there was no money in treasury. Because we realized our obligation. We know that we asked you to vote for us, to support us, and that we will remedy things. And so, we move on straight. We realize in our obligations. As one speaker said before, governance and government is a continuum. When you're going down, you cannot cry and complain. You have to try to remedy things. And that is exactly what we did. So, despite all the problems that this government faced, we were able to continue to pay salary and pay salary on time. As one speaker mentioned, we were able to pay back pay that was not negotiated by this government, but by the government that realized that they were losing an election and so they did not care what action to take and who would have to face the fire. But we stood up and we met that obligation, my friends. We've created employment. One of the speakers talked about the Imani Program, where we have employed thousands of youngsters. Because the Prime Minister would tell you, when the youngsters came and they look into your eyes and you look into their eyes, you realize you were desperate. We have an obligation to make sure that our young people get an opportunity. And so, this is what we are doing, my friends. And we campaign, we campaign on a new economic development project. We said we want a new economy. And so, we moved directly ahead to create a new economy. Now, we have paid large outstanding bills, regionally and internationally. We made millions of dollars of dollars in unpaid claims in the treasury. And we continue to pay that down, my friends. We are not complaining about anything. And this is why this evening, we are standing here tall and proud to know that we are handling the people's business the way the people want us to handle their business. My friends, it is not easy. You have heard and you will continue to hear about a call for sacrifices. All of us shed sacrifices. Because if we do not do so, the alternative is very bleak. We don't want it to fall out of consciousness. We have promised, we have promised our people that we will not lay them off. We promise that we will not lay off any single servant. But, of course, in order to keep that promise, we have to make other sacrifices. And we talk about the taxes, which the Prime Minister would talk about later on. But my friends, it was not easy. As I said in Parliament a couple of days ago, when I sit down around the table and when we have to make the decisions that will affect our people in terms of taxes, we look at each other's faces and everyone there looks as if they are about to do some kind of a road canal in the dental chair. Because we feel the pain, and we are humble about this. We are not arrogant, we feel the pain. But we know that better days are coming. And we also know that very soon we will be able to help adjust, of course, those measures that we have taken and that we know that, in a sense, are very difficult for our people to meet. My friends, another thing that these people, the people of Grenada, Caracu and Pitymartnik voted for was for good leadership. Because they are ashamed of the indecisiveness and poor leadership that existed prior to this government. And my friend, I want to say, and someone mentioned before, that this Prime Minister, we are trying to boost him up in any way. He's the best Grenada has ever seen, and I'm sure because he definitely knows. My friends, I want to talk to you about the ministries under my watch. And I want to talk about Ministry of Legal Affairs that is very important. And about our legislative agenda as a government. We have decided that it's time to change our constitution, to amend certain sections of our constitution. You know, our constitution was handed down to us in 1974 for independence. And our people never had the opportunity to have any kind of input in our constitution. And much has happened in the 40 years since independence. Much has changed. And we have to make sure we live up to the present day sense of governance, human rights, and other very important aspects. And so, we are quoting the constitution to see what measures we should take to bring it up to standard with modern day living. We have, for instance, identified the CCJ, the Caribbean Court of Justice. That's one of the items the Constitutional Reform Commission is looking at. In other words, our final court of appeal as it is right now is the Privy Council in England. Now, the Privy Council makes final decision for us and we have to live with it, even if they might not understand our social and cultural heritage. And we are saying, we think it's time for our own court to handle our destiny. And this is why this is one of the provisions that we want to reform so that Grenada can join the appellate division of the CCJ. There have much have been said because some of our people are saying they do not have faith in Caribbean justice. That they are afraid there will be political interference. That they don't think that we competent to do it. But my friends, those are not reasons, those are just excuses. Because I want to say to you that the Privy Council is telling us in many ways that it is time for us to get our own wings to fly. It is time for us to move on, they are tired of us. And I can tell you that the Caribbean has some of the best justices that I know in the world. And in terms of political interference, it will be such that there will be no opportunity for any politician to interfere. So, I am saying that we have an obligation and a responsibility to make sure our country move on to the Caribbean Court of Justice so we can determine our own destiny. The other thing, of course, you know, today, according to our constitution, we have a supervisor of election. And so, look, one person that has that has some responsibility of dealing with editorial affairs. And of course, we believe that as other regional states, it would be good for us to have a constitutional commission, where several sectors of our society would be represented. And so, then, no one would be pointing fingers at any single individual because we have a commission. My friends, there is another very important aspect that we are looking at. This one, I know is very dear and near to me, and very dear and near to the people of Caracu and Pitymartnik. And that is the insertion of the name of Caracu and Pitymartnik on our national passport. I can see the reason why not. I see the reason why not, and we have some presidents. We have right around us, Strait Island, Tobago, St. Vincent, Greenwich, Antigua, Barbuda, Lima, Great Britain, and Northern Ireland. What is the reason that we cannot insert Caracu and Pitymartnik on our passport? I have seen everything that is done. Another agenda in our legislative plan, my friends, is curing land title. You know, in Grenada, Caracu and Pitymartnik, we have a serious problem with land title. People die and they leave the land behind. Some definitely live it for their friends and their relatives. And they say, well, you could build anywhere you want. Don't worry, nobody will bother you. Only to find out, when you start building, 10 persons came out from the woodworks and say, this is my motherland, this is my fatherland, and I have a deed for it. We want to make sure that we create that legal framework so that you would have clean and clear title to your property. This is another very important aspect we are handling in legal affairs. My friends, and for those of us here from Caracu and Pitymartnik, I want to say this to you, and the evidence is all around us. Since the new national party took government in 1995, to this very present day, Caracu and Pitymartnik has never had it so good. This government, in the past, the NNP and the present NNP, made sure that it kept Caracu abreast in terms of progress. Just about everything done in Mayland, Grenada, has been done in Caracu. Infrastructure development, education, social services, everything is done. And I want to say thanks to the Prime Minister Michael A. for always standing with us very hard to make sure Caracu gets its fair share. We have a package for Caracu right now. A very big package that will transform Caracu and Pitymartnik forever. We started with transportation. The government has entered into an agreement with a Chinese company to build an airport at Larista. We know right now we are challenged with transportation. At any one point, because the plane is so small, the plane that travels from Caracu to Grenada and from Grenada to Caracu, at any one point, there are no seats. And then, we have problems with the air spray, and so, transportation is a mess. We cannot hope to develop our country or try it in state. We are making sure we fix the transportation problem. And this is why, my friends, that the government is making sure to push it forward. That very soon, very soon, we will have a brand new airport in Caracu coming up. And then, we have something else that is quite important. Many of us know the problem that we face in terms of inadequate water supply. It happens throughout the state of Grenada, Caracu and Pitymartnik. But of course, it's much more intense in Caracu over the years. And even quite recently, I ran out of water, I had to bathe in a bucket, as anybody else. But the days for this will be soon over. Because the European Union has funded a project called the Five Seas, Reverse Osmosis, whereby water inadequate supply would be Caracu and Pitymartnik pumped and piped to the homes of everyone. But we want to say this. Every privilege, every benefit has a responsibility. And I know there is a mindset that water is God's water, and so, you shouldn't pay for it. But we expect that everyone will be willing to pay something to make sure that they get adequate water supply. And so, I am calling on us to make sure that when the time comes, we do the right thing and decide to pay so that we can have water supply. In addition, the jetty in Hillsborough has outlived its usefulness. As a matter of fact, it's quite dangerous and of course, needs not only repair, but it needs to be demolished completely. And so, the intent, and of course, we already commenced preliminary works, is to bring the present jetty from Harville at Tewil Bay, and the present jet from Hillsborough at Tewil Bay in Harville. But we are also mindful that we do not want Hillsborough to become a ghost town. So, we are calling upon everyone, including some foreign investors, to make sure that they do some activities in Hillsborough so that we will not have any problem in terms of keeping the town alive. You also remember that the new national party administration, after many years of requests, had decided to allot some lands to people in Caracu and Pitymartnik. When the NSC administration came in, for some spite and other reasons, they took back the land. On December 2nd of 2013, the NNP administration decided to return the land to all the people that had this land assigned to them. And so, persons who did not have lands, did not, were unable to erect a shelter, can now be hopeful that that would happen. And I also want to say that we have negotiated 2,000 houses from the Chinese. The last government, the NSC government, found that it was too much for Caracu and Grenada, so they gave back 1,000 to the Chinese. So, we went back and renegotiated again. So, these houses are common, some already built in Mayland and Grenada, and the people of Caracu and Pitymartnik will get this share of housing. What else could we ask for, my friends? What else could we ask for? And on the national front, on the national front itself, your government is working and working very hard to make life better for all of its citizens. Listen, mate, all of us, all of us, those of us at home, you here in the diaspora, we have a responsibility to help make our country a better place. And talking about the diaspora, you have been playing and I know you are playing a very integral part, a very integral role in building our country. We know that you've made tremendous sacrifices. I know personally of persons who have taken out money from the mortgage payment to send to help in Grenada when we had the crisis, the top of the hurricane. Diaspora, we love you. We value your support. We value your contribution. So much so that we have recently appointed an ambassador in the person of Honourable Derek James to be ambassador of diaspora affairs. We have also had and continue to start up an office in Grenada, a diaspora office in Grenada, and we would fully staff that office very soon so that there would be interaction between the diaspora and of course, Grenada. So, we can never forget your importance in nation building. And we want you to know this. And we want you to continue to help us in whatever way possible. Because remember, at the end of the day, each of us, each of us has an obligation to see our country a better place. And we want to work together, work together, and to make sure that Grenada, Caracu and Pitymartnik is the best that it can be. But most of all, we want you to answer the call of unity. Too much fighting, and the last government paid a big price for this. They paid a price because the people was tired of the fighting and the fighting and the fussing and the carrying on between and among all of these people. And this is why the people say enough is enough. And I want you to know, and we are very conscious, that we are not immune. Because the people are looking at us also. And if we do the same thing, they could do the same thing back to us. And this is why this government is so humble. We have 15 seats. We could be out and about it, but we are very humble. When we bury a piece of legislation and some group or some individual say to us that they have a problem with that, we would put it back for now and then we go reexamine and go back to Parliament. We had what you call the electronic crime bill. Would we believe it was a good piece of legislation? Because it was to protect society from unscrupulous people that would go on the internet and put very demeaning and derogative statements on the internet about others. We thought that was wrong. They would exploit young children. We thought that was wrong, and we moved to cure it. But then, the people were saying, the media was saying that we were infringing on the right of free speech, etc., etc. And so, we went back and we had a second look of it. And then, we adjusted to suit. The point they're making is, we don't say we have 15 seats and we don't care. We have 15 seats and we hide it before. But we are using power very judiciously. We are using power in such a way that we are not abusing it. And the people of Grenada, Caracu and Pitymartnik, they respect us for this. So, we're not rewarding anyone. We are making sure that everyone has a say in whatever we do. So, my friends, this evening, I want to say to each of you that you are very important to us. I want to repeat that again and again. That you have an obligation to help build your country, all of us. Because when you would have left this world, when you would have left this world, you want to make sure that something good will bring to you. you want to make sure that something good read to say that I paid my part, that I made my own contribution to the building of my dear land, Grenada, Caracu and Pitymartnik. I thank you very much.
Put your hands together again, brothers and sisters. Speech is given, our deputy prime minister.